Start with the pledge. Ladies and gentlemen, this is the flag of the United States of America. We salute all our ancestors, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Who called this?
Trusty Gisenda.
Here.
Trusty Garrick.
Here.
Trusty, probably Kim and Trusty Tom Tom later, I'll fix you. Yeah, ahead.
Here. Motion to approve minutes for this meeting?
I don't think we're gonna have enough people.
You don't have enough. Can't, I wasn't here. I'm already out of here.
Well, hold up, minutes approval until the next meeting?
There's a typo on the very first page. It says even, it should be ever. Better than ever chance instead of better than even chance.
Are you?
Do you want particulars? No, on the page one, I remember.
Six line down, number two.
Thank you.
Better than even chance. That's what I had.
Better than ever chance, better than even chance?
Better than even.
What does better than even chance mean? Better than fifty?
We have better than even chance.
I have never heard that expression.
Why you learn something?
Yeah.
Okay, I thought it was a better than ever chance of getting the, okay. I stand corrected.
Okay, thank you.
There's a first.
Hold on, mark this out, let me go. Presentation, petitions, communications, notices, general question period, members of the community. A report for Mr. Tatro, has he, did he call? Oh, okay. Give that before the next meeting. My report. The August 18 Village Fest very well attended and a good time was had by all. The event gives the community the chance to sit and visit, enjoy the music, and view the many displays available for their viewing pleasure. The celebration would not be possible without the generous donations from area businesses and organizations and the hard work of many who helped with organization, setting up and cleaning up after the event was over. A special thanks goes to the Stewart's shop in Rouse's Point that supplied the ice cream. They are always very generous when it comes to helping community events. Homeland Security, Border Patrol. For their informational displays, the helicopter, watercraft, and the dog attracted much attention. The agents were very professional in their presentations. A big thanks goes out to the following. Champlain Fire Department, Champlain EMS, Kenny Drugs, Valero Gas Convenience Store, Borderview Grocery, Price Chopper, Morrisonville Septic, The Music Man, Mr. James Tatro for supplying music and singing, The Knights of Columbus, tables, chairs, and ice, Celine Paquette, who had her museum open for tours, Larry Sorrell for the pony rides, indoors to go, Donna Barkum who did the face painting for the children, Town of Champlain and Champlain Telephone Company for their advertising help. Please support these businesses and organizations who so generously give to the village so these celebrations can take place. Without them, Village Fest would not be possible. Lastly, I would like to thank the village staff who made the phone calls to secure donations, who set up the grounds for the fest and helped clean up after the event. Without their help, these events in the village would not be as successful and enjoyable for the community residents. Now for the general news. There's a rabies clinic Thursday, the 27th of September, Rouse's Point Fire Department, fire station. All pets must be at least three months old. Pets need their first vaccination by four months old and you need to bring your vaccination records or certificate with you. The village would like to thank Northern Tier Housing for their generous donation to the village. That's number five in your correspondence. The growing season for the community garden is ending. I am asking that each gardener clean their plot and put their plant debris in the grass behind the water wagon for composting. It was a successful season for the gardens with lots of fresh vegetables and much shearing of vegetables with the local food shelf. A heartfelt thank you to all who participated. To those who helped themselves, to someone else's hard work and efforts, all I can say to you is shame on you. We are beginning our fundraising for our playground and Trusty Garrick will have more information on that. Thank you. Trusty Garrick.
Wow, that's disappointing to hear, in the garden. Also on the rabies clinic, there is one down at Shazie Fire Station if that's easier for folks, and that's October 18th. If you're not able to make the line in Rouse's Point on the 27th. Our movie night was a wonderful success. Special thank you to Ray Amlee, who is the owner of the businesses, Papa John and Dunkin' Donuts, and Lynn St. Pierre, who coordinates all these activities for this. As well as Tanya and Chad and this crew, they have a lot of volunteers that came and helped out for the event and it was nice, again, to have the community get together just for something fun. We raised a little over or under $300? A little under $300, which is a great start. We also received an anonymous donation of $1,000 already, so we're on our way with the playground. We are accepting donations at any time. If you'd like to mail in a donation towards the playground fund right here to the village office, that would be great. And is your daughter putting updates on the website on the playground?
She gets the stuff through the web.
Okay, great. So you can check out the site for where we're at. I am looking at other avenues for further funding as well. Letters will be going out to area businesses by the end of next week at the latest. And then I'm looking to solicit residents here within the village to see if you're interested in helping out with funding towards it. Most of the grants that are available to us are 50-50, which means if we get $100,000 in a grant, we could be wicked cool. We need to come up with $100,000 in matching funds. So, you know, we're gonna shoot for the moon and get the best thing that we can get down there. That would be really nice to do it. And once we do get that up, you know, the playground will be for the community and it would be a shame if we have things that are happening in our garden where damage is done to the playground equipment. You know, I have to echo Greg saying shame on you, whomever it is, that was taken from this garden. It was done once and, you know, then posted signs went up. It just is a, it's a sad day when people feel no shame in stealing or damaging property. It really is a sad day. So if anyone's aware of who did it, it would be nice to turn in the folks and you really should do that in order to keep our community safe. You know, it's just, to me, it's just as despicable that people so easily can take. Sorry, I just have to add that opinion in. So, also thank you to Price Chopper, who also gave us $25 towards snacks for the movie night. I greatly appreciate it. Just to jump back to the movie night. So, we will continue to work on the playground. Anyone has any ideas, feel free to offer them and we will be looking to incorporate an ice skating rink that's a little bit more, say not permanent, because nothing can be permanent down there, but lasting where it's not so labor intensive dumping gallons and gallons and gallons of water on it. But get that up and running earlier in the season so we could use it. Since we have such a beautiful summer, I'm anticipating record-breaking cold temperatures with lots of snow for the winter.
Oh, don't say it.
I know, but you know.
Shoot our budget.
Anyway. So, we will continue to work on that and I will keep everyone appraised of where we stand money-wise and how the grants are coming.
Okay. Want to, we should hear from the economic development, right, person? Is that a call? So maybe by the November meeting, we'll have a better idea of what we have coming.
Yeah, and there's other sources out there, so I'm making a list of them and my philosophy on grants is apply for as many as you can and, you know, better chances.
A lot of the playground companies will almost raise money as well. We can do that. Maybe that would be a good place for our millings because the forests.
A lot of being thrown.
The only thing I was gonna look at too is, you know, like the Pepsi challenge, you know, those kinds of things where you get people to phone in and stuff. You know, it doesn't come anywhere to the case of, you know, fighting for a child's life, that usually wins on those things, but I'll look at the different avenues and see where we stand.
So, here's to get a very good term.
Yeah.
Thanks, man. Tom?
Just a brief follow-up from last month's meeting. I see we have new sign on South Anderson Street, refurbished sign, let's go. We had mentioned the millings. Superintendent Sorrell mentioned that we were gonna use them for our waste treatment plant.
Correct.
Has that been completed?
No, we're still, we still have one more, but we've stopped people out of there. I got a script on the inside of the walls.
That's still in process.
Make sure it's gonna be used and I guess it's in the process.
The only other note, there's been an ongoing truck idling, commercial truck idling, bothering on Elm Street, large parking lot. Not so much that is being a problem, as opposed to the speed of the trucks, commercial trucks, you can name off all your basic carriers. Very evident, it's obvious. None of the local patrols care to make an issue of it or to see that the companies are spoken to or the drivers are spoken to directly. Speed is outrageous for commercial trucks on Elm Street. And not only are they not delivered, you can visibly see that they're coming off of either West Service Road or East Service Road coming down and going directly to Elm Street, or, I'm sorry, Route 11 without any stops or business being a dead going down. It's serious, true traffic, there are children on the road. School season is in effect or coming in effect now in this street.
No.
It's just not a, not a pretty, pretty situation. You see all the local law enforcement, state police, border patrol, homeland security, but apparently they're oblivious to this.
Sorry, I forgot you anymore.
The other, the other issue is that it is private property where these trucks are to be idling. It is a DEC law, the DEC is very aware of this currently. It's become a trend for certain drivers, whether they're from out of country or local, that they take it upon that it's their private truck stop. There are truck stops here in town.
Where are they running?
I would presume they're either running electricity generators either for their entertainment purposes or cooling, which I find unreasonable since the past few nights they've been in 60-degree weather, 50-degree weather. I don't understand why they would need heat or air conditioning, but they like to have power in their trucks and that apparently is the mode to be in now. Like I said, it's warning, the DEC is very aware. Just that it would be nice that the local patrols would pay attention more to the commercial traffic. We have, you know, there is passenger traffic that does the same, but more than likely, local residents are obeying the speed limit. It's the past proves that are really creating a situation, a dangerous situation.
Maybe if you call, the Sheriff's Department, which has been very good with scheduling patrols, speed enforcement, law, I'll call them as well.
We, I know, we have been on this subject time and time as far as that traffic, especially since it became. Personally, with exposure to what's on that street, I have yet to see a controlled, controlled stop for any commercial.
I'll give them another call once it's, it's a patrol center.
That is all I have for now.
Thank you. Okay, have you reports from the clerk's preservers?
I don't have their expense, are we in the report for August?
See our budget, our budget forecast just stood.
Nice, very well.
It's been very well, it's done very well.
Thank them too. Hey Larry, what was the windshield that got needed to be replaced?
That's not a windshield, it's the windows door that blew up.
What happened?
Got nicked in the corner of the door, back in. It's all glass and two inches.
Do they have glass coverage on insurance?
I, if you have $500, you definitely.
On glass?
Yes. And that, when I got that bill, it was $460. Yes.
I think it was $400.
It was $400 something and I called because he called me 2:59.
Okay.
This presentation is very good. Presentation of warrant, here. The motion?
Oh, we have the words to pass.
Total is $1,069.77. The motion, add $1,069.77 to the warrant?
So long.
Second.
Second motion.
Call the paper. We need a roll call for this?
Yeah.
Yes, okay.
Trusty Garrick?
That's on there, so.
Trusty Garrick? I can't find my signature.
In the middle of the rock.
Okay, it is on your, section AWWA. My mistake, sorry. This is the water class, waste water class, Peru, November, November 7th, Larry?
6th and 7th.
Okay, for two days. In one class, the first class, you get the six and a half hours of water credits and all four of our employees, DPW staff, need these hours to maintain their water licenses. Second day is seven hours, seven additional hours of water credits plus seven hours of waste water credit. And that paves particularly to Woody, but he also needs the water credits as do Larry, Jimmy, and Gary. This is two days, it's at the Peru Fire Station?
Correct.
For the sum of $600. We'll all afford to attend both days.
So 13 and a half hour is of water credit for all four?
Incorrect.
And seven credit hours? 14 credit hours?
No, it's 13 and a half credits.
Right.
Yeah.
Of water and seven credit hours of waste water for you and Woody?
No, just for Woody, Woody's one of the waste.
Just for Woody? And what is the total number of contact hours you need?
Woody and I need 30 on water.
Per year?
Every three years. And I love, I'm not sure if it is on waste water, I think it's 30 or 40.
Peru warrant, checking journey goes through.
Ah, yeah, because they haven't seen the D license, so these credit hours will add for both licenses, so.
There's a gap for each license?
They, yes, they have a D and a C. It comes up to about $10 a credit hour and if you send somebody to Saratoga overnight, that's one person.
And to make sure that the testing is done, everything is.
Correct, yeah. Everything done for.
Need a motion to approve this?
No.
For second. Any further discussion on this? Roll call, please.
Trusty Gisenda?
Aye.
Trusty Garrick?
Aye.
Mayor Martin?
Aye.
Need a motion to add $1,069.77 to the warrant?
Well, no, because we just approved the minus the 600.
No, no, we have to add these to the warrant.
Yeah, total.
Oh, okay, so sorry.
Have a motion to approve?
No.
For second.
Second.
Roll call.
Trusty Gisenda?
Aye.
Trusty Garrick?
Aye.
Mayor Martin?
Aye.
Need a motion to approve the warrant, pay the bills?
No.
For second.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Trusty Gisenda?
Aye.
Trusty Garrick?
Aye.
Mayor Martin?
Report from the superintendent, please.
Oh. You all have a copy of the work log in front of you. As you can see, the three streets that I had slated for line are all painted, not mullied.
Look very good to the other way.
We had a water main break on Butter Nutt Street between Butter Nutt and Prospect Sunday. Call Diane, shut the valves down and just let it run a little bit. When you can't, you pull the rate off, you have to move a little water, water, all that. And I did cook one house from one building because that belong that line. It got fixed yesterday. And in the 30 years I've been here, there was a ban for that, so it's a line that never knew we had in the back. So, I ordered two, I will have one for tenants, one for suburbs because we have a track.
Can we hear a lot of that, like, in the early?
It comes from the back of the old rural gas station off Walker Street, all the way across to Prospect. And then it's all been stuck to across Prospect. And that was part of the shared service table with just the, the home line here, you're right of that.
And would there be some special removal due to the asbestos?
As long as it's wet, if they keep it wet.
Oh, it does, maybe it'll crack and then it gets wet.
It doesn't make a difference as long as it's wet. If it's dry then, in actuality, if they went down with it, the best thing to do is just shut it off and leave it buried. If you, you can bury it. You can't just pick it up and expose it someplace.
Right.
Okay, if Larry brought something to my attention, I think we need to share with the board something in the future here that we need to look at and we need to be ready for that, that water line.
The water line that goes across the bridge by Cool Home Store, going up. That water line got taken out and we had the ice back two years ago.
Ice, right.
If something was to happen in that main, that goal between Oak Street and Main Street across the rural track, we better hope our tank is full because otherwise we're not gonna have to give water to this village. The only one who can have water would be from the village. What, until we decide what we're gonna do, myself, I like to purchase enough fire hose to go from the hydrant by stones to the hydrant by the old fire station, probably 400 feet. And habits of brand new, whatever had to happen, we could transfer from one hydrant to the other to make sure we got water on one side, both sides of the village. It's the hardest decision. Yes.
Well, what do we do as more of a long-term fix?
A long-term fix?
Yeah.
That we go through with this shared service grant.
That'll work, right?
That'll be, there'll be a new line for the cross. They did talk about two years ago, if nicer was going to be gas paint underneath the river.
Right, right.
That we would sleeve that line that's on there, but it's all the state, they're, you know, what must have on the bridge.
So.
What is happening with that bridge?
Well, that's what I was just gonna say, the worst part, well, the place.
That was supposed to happen this spring.
They haven't won.
They opened up all the funding for all the bridges. Every bridge is under construction but ours. In the entire country. I ain't, don't you all, who's traveled this summer everywhere?
Oh, yeah.
Everywhere you go, every bridge is torn up.
You know, we just, we just need to think about that, you know?
Yeah, always rather, better be safe than sorry.
I ordered a couple valve box extensions for the, when we were already over there that hole to raise it so it's, it's at ground level.
Larry, so the hose concept, is that, would be required, like, special line?
It's, I, it's good to be drinking water? Yes, as long as it's a new hose, if they, they do have the fire hose now, it's got the rubber line inside of it, you would have to coordinate it. But what you coordinate, it's the same when we had the problem with the water plant, we transferred from one hydrant, from the wells over to the other hydrant and that's we, we took care of that.
Doesn't have to be potable? It doesn't have to be potable, the hose?
Yes, you get the fire hose, it has a line. And it goes out, they go, they go, so, I mean, just if something happens, we should have something.
Would it be considered special water tank hose or something that's stocked?
I don't know.
Or maybe the city fire departments?
I'm gonna find out, I was thinking of that today, so. I mean, we need, we need to make careful of this. Because if this shared servicing doesn't go through, we're gonna have to dumb the line. We're gonna have to have someone to come in because of that. Then you have to, to all my things, get it strapped back to the brakes. We do have valves on both sides, but.
I'm ready to screen the water glass.
I'll see what the city cluster uses, because when they had a water break or something, they would route their water so they keep going. Or we can try running something up if something happens, maybe something like that. I already did work on it. We're gonna be reading water meters this month. And next month, I like to, plus the hydrants, coming that time of year. And we'll, we'll do a follow-up next month sometime for end of October, like we did before and after Halloween. I did the PLC, the disenthoys by product samples, that's all gone in the lab, so I'll have it in the thing, so next year, I'm gonna be able to sample them all.
And we've done a couple water jobs for the town?
Yes.
Playing police, court do, and we have to, did a water cap at Wepkin Barrow. The town was built for that, both of those services.
Yeah, reminder on that, to contact UPS when you have a break like that?
Yeah, we have a day, day and wait.
Yeah, because I didn't get contact on that last one, but they called me and I told them that it had happened.
There's.
Sure, they're having a lot of problems, the employees complaining about the water and they're taking the rate up to top levels, so it becomes an issue.
Well, they have, they have, their line that goes into their place is a four or six inch line. So if they're just flushing commodes or just washing their hands and they're not letting water run, they, they need to, when we flush, they actually should have a blow-off someplace where there's clusters or let your hose run on the, on the backside. I do the same thing up at the industrial park. I tell them we're flushing, they can open up their bolt two and slow off and clean up their system because the water sets in that line and will get stagnant.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, in a filtration system, because it's a constant issue over there, so. This will.
We had, Tuesday, Friday, we had flood sewer at Portview.
Right.
We had to go clean that. And then we had the Fine Water Service following Friday. And then I did the water main cap on 35 Wepkin Barrow last Thursday.
I see nothing's happening with sidewalks again. It seems like we're going year after year. Especially the sidewalk downtown looks really crappy with all the weeds and stuff. Is there anything we can do?
I just, I just got on Monday, last, last Tuesday, I just got a new job of the stuff, so they will get all sprayed. I said wait for your comment.
Service for the road.
I am, do wanna pull the sidewalk up in front of Mr. EOP Cardinals. By the empty lot, because it's a slump right there, on Church Street.
Oh, okay.
There's a few spots.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Larry?
Yep.
Anything else for Larry? Clerk's preservers, please?
Leverage of Victoria Watts regarding pool inspection. Corresponds to the Town of Champlain, requested water service. champagne request and water service confirmed by Juarez Road, notes violation to Glenn's Fall Bank regarding uncut grass at thirteen Oak Street, corresponds to legislature in McManus regarding resolution five nineteen titled supporting the complete streets concept, corresponds to Northern Housing, corresponds from Northern Housing regarding their relation.
Nothing's changed in the old business, new business. We need to change the board, the dates of the board meetings for October, November. October is scheduled for October eighth, which is Columbus Day. We can push it back to October first, stay on the Monday schedule?
I'm wide open these days.
October first, okay, huh? All right, let's go, October, we'll go October first. November, it's scheduled for November twelfth, which is Veterans Day. I suggest we move it back a week to November fifth, is that all right?
Well, I'll be trying to debate who I'm going to vote for that night. And that may take a little bit of time.
Come to the board meeting and help you out. Okay, so November's will be November fifth, October's will be October first, six thirty. Okay, gather right in my head, this approval to the water wastewater school, we've done that. Bitter words for the wastewater treatment plant blowers, we solicited bids a month or so ago, we set out nine requested bid sheets, they were due today by two o'clock, and we received two. It's gonna take a little while to examine them, they were both much higher than we anticipated. So I'd like to have a little time to look at the bids, talk with Larry, talk with the rest of the board about them, and we have the option, obviously, of saying no, rejecting both bids, and deciding the path that we want to take after that. This is, these blowers, and I know we've talked about these, but these blowers are a way to improve the infrastructure of the wastewater treatment plant. The motors down there now are thirty years old.
Twenty-six.
Twenty-six years old, I anticipate that they are going to need some major repairs soon, I would much rather see us be a little more proactive. The best part of this whole deal is, this is not going to cost the taxpayers a penny to improve the wastewater treatment plant with these turbines. We have been handling outside septicage, and it has allowed us some, some funds to improve on the infrastructure without costing the taxpayer or the village anyone. So this is, I think, from our standpoint, it's, it's a good thing, obviously, but it's being more proactive, I'm afraid that if one of those motors go down, it's gonna be much more costly than what we, what we see here. So if it's okay with the board, we'll, we'll look at these bids, and we will make a decision at the next board meeting and go from there. Is that all right?
Yeah, we'd be happy with that.
Yes, you will. Is that all right? Okay. Have any other new business ladies?
No. Just ladies.
Anything else? Anything, anything else?
No, good.
Need a motion to approve, or a motion to?
Jury.
A jury.
So both.
Second?
Second.
Own favor?
Aye.
All right. Thank you, folks.
Thank you. I'll get that lever to your mom. Sorry. But light keeps coming up.
Yeah, light happens.